Okay, good evening everyone. Welcome to the North Ridgeville City School Board Meeting. Today is March 20th, 2018. It is 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Aye.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I feel like this group of young people should be here every time to do our Pledge of Allegiance. That was pretty great. Uh, roll call please.
Ms. Yefzie.
Here.
Ms. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Saxon.
Here.
Ms. Comer.
Here.
Ms. Rock.
Finalization of agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
It is recommended the Board of Education approve the video transcribed meeting minutes for February 20, 2018. Further, it is recommended that a written summary of the special and regular minutes for the meetings on February 5, 2018, February 6, 2018, February 10, 2018, and corrected February 20, 2018 be approved.
Move.
Moved by Mrs. Samira, second member of Mr. Vaca. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. Comer.
Yes.
Ms. Proctor.
Yes.
Ms. Yefzie.
Yes.
Ms. Saxon.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes. It brings us to education reports.
We have a presentation from Maria Sitch tonight to the board, so we're gonna ask her to come to the front. And...
Good evening administrators, board members, and community. My name is Maria Sitch. I was a board member for ten years. I've been a community member for twenty plus. And what started out over ten years ago as a little research project about the history of North Ridgeville City Schools turned into a journey that I never thought I would be on. I never thought of myself as a history buff or a writer, but that all changed. After many, many hours of reading, and some of you know all of those hours, and researching about the schools, my current project is complete. The 200-year history of North Ridgeville City Schools is now in book form. There's an abundance of information that I've been able to locate and share within the pages of this book. I'll just give you a couple highlights, because there's a chapter on every year up until 2014. Not every year, but every decade. So there's the early years, the twenties, the thirties, and then all the way up to the two thousands. The first schoolhouse was erected in North Ridgeville in 1814, in the center of town. It was a log building that was about eighteen feet by twenty-two feet wide. A Board of Education was established on April 23rd of 1853. The first bond issue presented to the community in 1920 failed, and wasn't presented again until 1923. And with its passage, the district saw the building of the field school and the soon-to-be-demolished middle school. The first football game was played in September of 1924 against Bay Village, and Ridgeville won that game 26-0. At the time, the football team was known as the Yellow Jackets, and the girls' basketball team were the Mermaids. I wonder if this is how the horse got his name of Merm. Or, and yes, the horse did have a name, and the little Ranger Dude that everybody calls Ranger Dude, his name was Randy Ranger North. Those are just a few of the many interesting facts that I could share. I could talk forever on all of the information that's in the book, but I would like to present a copy of the 200 years to the board. The 200 years to the board. Does hold the shot. With signing. And there will be copies available if anybody is interested.
Thank you, Maria.
Maria, I know you've been working on this for quite a long time.
Very long time.
And I know you've put a lot of hours and dedication into it, and I am so excited, can't wait to read it, and I know that this will be an asset to our school district, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And you forgot to sign it, so...
I could do that.
When you're able to. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
For the record, I'm equally relieved we're no longer involved in our base.
We'll move to staff, students, community representatives.
Thank you, Madam President. We will start with the early childhood lines. Mrs. Vance.
As I said, I'm Mrs. Vance. I'm the building principal at the preschool and kindergarten, and tonight I have the pleasure of introducing our Students of the Month. And we're actually gonna start with our Student of the Month from kindergarten, and Allison Coates is our Student of the Month from Ms. Rogers and Mrs. Reese's class. Allison, can you wave your hand? Yeah, awesome. And her teacher said that Allison was picked to be Student of the Month because she is hardworking, kind to her friends, and a great student to have in class. Allison is always helping her friends. She shares her crayons, pencils, and goes above and beyond to be helpful. She is also a hard worker, and she currently knows on her over a hundred sight words, and is excited to learn more. Allison is a great student to have in class, and will do great in first grade. We will definitely miss her. Keep up the great work, Allison. Congratulations. And is Logan here today? I didn't see him come... Oh, Logan, come on up. I didn't see you back there, buddy. Oh, you look so handsome, too. Come on. Have you stand right up front. Right here. Awesome. Okay. Help me with your... The last name again.
Kowalczek.
Kowalczek, okay. So now we have Logan Kowalczek, and Logan, can you wave? All right. And Logan is at our preschool, and Logan is in Mrs. Paney's class, and she says that Logan arrives to school each morning with a smile... ...and a pleasant greeting. He is such a polite boy and a caring friend to all. Logan is always ready to learn and takes great pride in his work. Logan sets a great example for his peers, and we are so fortunate to have Logan as part of their class and school. Congratulations to Logan. And last but certainly not least, our Student of the Month that we have from January, Sophia Singleton is here. Sophia, can you wave or give him a nice smile?
Smile.
All right. Sophia is in Mrs. Gerald's class, and Mrs. Gerald says Sophia is always happy. Her smile and laughter is contagious and always brings happiness to everyone around her, and it's so true. She is eager to participate in music and games and activities, and always has great enthusiasm for everything she does. And I will say very quickly, Sophia has been working really hard with walking in her standard, she's doing... Her walker, and she's doing an amazing job, so we are so excited to see her tonight in her walker. So congratulations to Sophia and all her accomplishments that she's had this year. And I think that would be enough for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Mitch Chaffron. I'm the principal of Liberty School, and it's my pleasure to introduce two of our Students of the Month. Mr. Planter, I'm sorry, I'm gonna steal your line. This is a huge deal, because we have over 700 kids at Liberty. And if you've ever driven by, I know it's hard to believe that we fit that many kids in there, but these two were selected out of that many kids, so this is a super big deal. The first student that we have nominated is Austin. Go ahead and wave, Austin. All right. Austin is training to be my Assistant Principal. That's why he looks so sharp tonight. He also does the best job at the Pledge of Allegiance. I just found that out. Good job. Austin was nominated by Mrs. Burns, and here's what she has to say. Austin is a kind and caring student who is always willing to help others in class. He goes above and beyond in everything he does, and is a great example of what it means to be Ranger Strong. Keep up the great work, Austin. Fantastic job. Our next Student of the Month is Adeline Springer. Go ahead and wave, Adeline. I was talking to Adeline before, over here at the side, and I said, "You help out at home, too?" And she goes, "Oh, yeah. I have lots of chores." And I said, "What are some of the chores?" She said, "Well, I have to dust the TV," so... And you tell, but she didn't say it with the kind of misgivings of most kids with chores. She looked excited to say how much she helped, and that is a testament to how she is in school as well. Adeline, and this is what Mrs. DeLucas said about her. "Adeline is a very hardworking member of our class. She's always willing to help out. She puts out... She puts 100% effort into all of her assignments. Adeline is also a great friend to all the kids in the class. Excellent job, Adeline. Way to be Ranger Strong." My pleasure to introduce Mr. Planter from N R A C.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Greg Planter. I'm the principal of the third and fourth grade students here at the Academic Center. We have two Students of the Month, and one of us is joined here with me. This is Maddie Kuhn. I'm gonna talk about Maddie in a moment, but first I'm gonna talk a little bit about Amira Souleman. Amira is not able to join us this evening unless she snuck in somewhere, but I do wanna read her nomination from her TEAL Studio teachers. She is in the TEAL Studio with Mrs. Burkher, Mrs. Darby, Ms. Gudjow, and Ms. Quinn, and Mrs. Regals. This is what they have to say about Amira. "Amira embodies many great character traits, including ownership, and has shown personal growth in many areas. She's always eager to get to the room and begin her day with a warm greeting and a smile. Amira has become so much more independent as this year has progressed. She's really grown in her ability to problem-solve, as well as set and meet new goals or challenges. She attends to her daily assignments with vigor and has become confident in her reading abilities. The past few months, she's really strived to meet her A R goals, and she's... And she had this month's goal met by the second day of March. She's filled with compassion for others. She likes to write personal notes to both peers and teachers when she wants them to know she's thinking about them. She loves to assist her classmates and her teachers whenever possible. We've taken notice of the positive goals that Amira has set for herself throughout this year, are extremely proud of how far she has come, and look forward to her continued success, both personally and academically." And now on to Maddie Kuhn, who has waited so patiently here for us. Thank you. This is Madeline Kuhn. She is in our Blue Studio. Her teachers are Mrs. Bonus, Mrs. Janetti, Ms. Galoja, Mrs. Ives, Mrs. Lorbeck, Mrs. Marchan, and Mrs. Schaefer, and she does work with a variety of those teachers throughout the day, and this is what they have to say about Maddie. "The Blue Studio is proud to honor Madeline Kuhn as our Student of the Month for March. Maddie demonstrates Ranger Strong each and every day in all that she does. She always starts the day with a smile and a bright hello to her teachers and classmates. She has a positive attitude that shines and makes her a great role model to those around her. Maddie shows ownership and respect for herself and our class by always being prepared, ready to help out with anything in the classroom, and being a kind friend to those around her. Maddie gives 100% in whatever she does and is always so sweet and polite. She truly makes our studio a brighter place to be." Congratulations. Now, I'd like to introduce Mrs. R. Brewster, the principal of our fourth and fifth grade.
Fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. Good evening, everyone. Yes, I'm Lee R. Brewster, and I'm honored to be here representing the Intermediate School Fifth and Sixth, as well as the Middle School Seventh and Eighth, and we have two sixth-grade students and two eighth-grade students this evening. Mrs. Peck is over at the seventh and eighth grade, but the end concert, so she couldn't be here, so I'm doing a double duty, and I'd be glad to do it, because we have four awesome students here. I'm gonna start with sixth grade. First, we have Aiden Foot. Aiden, can you raise your... Thank you. It is with great pleasure that the Ranger Strong Orange Team awards Aiden Foot Student of the Month. Aiden has a passion for helping others and taking ownership of his learning. He demonstrates leadership qualities and models respect to his peers and teachers daily. He also sets goals to challenge himself academically and puts the needs of others above his own. We appreciate Aiden defining what it truly means to be Ranger Strong. Ready to go, Aiden? Our next sixth-grade student is Griffin Torrey. It is with great pleasure that the TEAL Team nominates Griffin as Student of the Month. Griffin deserves this special recognition for numerous reasons. Griffin comes to school each and every day with a positive attitude, a smile on his face, and ready to learn. He also sets a positive example for his peers by being kind, respectful, and responsible. His work ethic and outstanding character does not go unrecognized in our studio or within our school. Griffin Torrey is truly Ranger Strong. If anybody's keeping count, I do wanna say we have had four boys in the last two months from the Intermediate School, so I mean, the teachers picked them, and there's no... You know, so I'm proud of our boys at the Intermediate School. Next, we have an eighth grader, and I'm very proud to be here again for Mrs. Peck. Oh, I put it last. I'm saving Sarah for last. I'm saving the girls for last. So Justin Mullins, he is our eighth-grade student. He has been selected by the eighth-grade Orange Studio as the March Student of the Month, Ms. Flynn, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Post, Ms. Ray, and Mrs. Heine. They share that his diligence and hard work and his great work ethic to achieve academic success are second to none. He exemplifies all the attributes of Ranger Strong in his daily interactions with peers and with adults. He is a role model and a positive influence in the classroom. We have no doubt that Justin will be highly successful at the high school, Mr. Zenry, and beyond. Congratulations, Justin. We can't wait to hear about your bright future. And our final, from the Academic Center, is the Green Studio is proud to recognize Sarah Schoen-Hite as our March Student of the Month. Ms. Atkins, Ms. Hofstadter, Mr. Hofstadter, Mrs. Harrelson, Mr. Caddy, and Mrs. Gardner, and Mrs. Gallagher, share that Sarah exemplifies our school's characteristics of citizenship through her compassionate demeanor toward her fellow classmates, and her responsibility both in and out of the classroom. Her respect for everyone that she interacts with is admirable. Sarah is also a stellar student in the classroom, always going above and beyond in her academic pursuit. Her soft-spoken leadership and personable attitude makes Sarah an excellent representative and an outstanding candidate for Student of the Month. As Sarah continues to represent all of the pillars of Ranger Strong, we are sure she is destined for success at the high school. Thank you all, and I am now gonna introduce Mrs. Perkins as High Tech Academy is coming up next for students of the month.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Durkin. I'm the principal over at our STEM School Ranger High Tech Academy, and I am honored to be here tonight with two of our learners who have shown extreme leadership in the last month, and so I'm very excited to be able to share that with you. Our first learner is Alex Foley, and he was nominated by Coach Zabachin. Alex is in fifth grade, and if his name sounds familiar, you may have read about him in the newspaper recently. So Coach Zabachin says, "Alex has demonstrated Ranger Strong behavior in his efforts to be the change he wishes to see in the world. After a discussion with his parents about the use of energy-saving devices in the home, Alex sought ways to help the citizens of North Ridgeville feel the rewards of having a smaller footprint. One idea he formulated was to create a buy-back program for the residents to bring in less efficient bulbs, so they could replace them with greener options. With the support of his family, Alex crafted a proposal and shared it with the community and business leaders. His dream will come to fruition with a program through a partnership with NOPAC and the city of North Ridgeville. So today, we celebrate Alex's idea, his passion for the environment, his willingness to take risks, and his impact on our community. Alex, we look forward to seeing your next project." And our next Student of the Month is Colin Chek. Colin is a sixth grader, and he was nominated by Coach Jeffrey. So Colin has demonstrated Ranger Strong behavior in his efforts to be an advocate for change in our world. Inspired by the actions of the students in Parkland, Florida to become advocates for school safety, Colin organized a sit-in for the learners at Ranger High Tech Academy on March 14th, 2018. At each minute mark, Colin provided a moment of remembrance for each of the 17 lives lost in Florida by stating their names. Other learners who decided to participate wrote letters to their legislators, and Colin had all of the names and where they were from. He had everything prepared for them. He had extra materials. I mean, he was set for this. And he gave them some ideas of how they could write to their legislators to advocate for the different ways that we could improve school safety throughout the United States. And thanks to Colin, our learners' voices have been given the opportunity to be heard about an issue that is so close to our hearts. And Colin also helped collect those letters and then mail them and get them to the appropriate location of legislators. So we are very, very proud of Colin. Thank you, Colin. And I am proud of both of these learners for everything that they're doing above and beyond to advocate for what they think is best. I guess I have to announce one. Our next speaker tonight, who is going to be introducing our learners from the high
Okay. I'm Tom Center. I'm the principal of North Ridgeville High School, and I have our two March Students of the Month with me. I'll start with... To my left here is Nevin Quinn. Nevin was nominated by Mrs. Baker, his math teacher. When he grows up, he wants to study sports management. Right now, his favorite class is history, and at the high school, he's involved in Key Club and the Anti-Bullying Club. Mrs. Baker says that Nevin is one of the most conscientious students I have ever had, and one of the most polite. He never gives up and seeks extra help outside of class whenever he needs it. He frequently stops by before school to ask questions on the homework from the night before that he did not understand. When he walks into class, he always greets Mrs. Fox and I with a good morning, "How's your day today?" and leaves class with "Have a great day." After I got into a car accident, he was the first student to ask me how I was feeling and if I was okay. I know I can always count on Nevin to care for others and to do the right thing. So congratulations, Nevin Quinn. Our second Student of the Month is T.J. Shaft. T.J. was nominated by Mrs. Carr, who is his family and consumer sciences teacher. He's not sure what he wants to be when he grows up, but his favorite class is algebra. He's involved in the band at the high school, and outside of school, he's very involved in 4H. So Mrs. Carr says that T.J. always works well with all the students in the class, but one day he really stood out in her mind. There was a very professional in the class, but she was absent that day, and the class was working on a sheet with the sub, and the sub was trying to work with one of our students with intensive needs, but she wasn't really getting anywhere. The student was upset that she couldn't do what everyone else was doing. After T.J. finished his work and turned it in, he went to the student and sat down with her. He started working with her in a very calm and kind way. He took his time and explained what they were doing and helped. He did this all on his own. Even the substitute was impressed. The student was very proud when she turned in her work, and she left the class with a smile on her face, and T.J. gets all the credit for that. So congratulations, T.J., our Student of the Month from the high school. The last thing I'd like to say is that all of these Students of the Month get a certificate for a free t-shirt from Bullfrogs, which is a...
Big Frog.
Big Frog. Sorry. Not for Bullfrogs. From Big Frog Custom Tees. That's funny, I didn't pull up the certificate. But we'd like to thank them for their support. They're over at Avon Commons and owned by North Ridgeville Residence.
Good evening, everyone. It's okay. Thank you. So I'm a little overwhelmed with all these students. Can we give them another round of applause? I'd love to say more about them, but I've already got tears welling in the eyes, so I'll just say thank you, women and girls. I'm very proud of you. Okay, that's enough. Parents, you should be very proud, as I know you probably really are. And then I want to thank our teachers, too, for recognizing them, and as always, thank our administrators for being here to acknowledge their accomplishments. Right now, it's my opportunity to acknowledge some of our staff members, so I'd like to invite the staff from the treasurer's office to join me at the podium, please. Julie and Diane here, and the mic. At this time, I'd like to say congratulations to all of you. And I know Pat, Alice, she couldn't be here tonight, but congratulations on receiving the Auditor State Award. Auditor of State Award. The Auditor of State Award is given to those entities that file timely financial reports in accordance with the GAAP gap, as well as receive a clean audit report. The clean audit report means that your financial audit did not contain findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, single audit findings, or any questions of cost. So what does that mean in normal people language? It means that they're doing an outstanding job with providing the districts with the right platform for spending our money and doing it in the means of the law, which, gosh, is always changing. If you guys know anything about school finance, you're better off than me. No, it's ever-changing, and it's a very complex and a complicated field, so it's with a great deal of pride and pleasure that I am able to give this to you today, the Ohio Auditor of State Award, for you to proudly display in your office, and I wanted to just say thank you for all of your hard work on behalf of the district. At this time, we will take a short intermission, so we can get some fabulous pictures of our wonderful students with their certificates.
The hearing of the public on agenda items. If there's anything on the agenda that you would like to address the board about, now is your opportunity to do so. All right. Seeing none, we'll move to new reports.
No committee report.
Superintendent's report. Back to the pod.
Thank you, Madam President. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the consented agenda resolution as presented below, and I'll go through those items quickly. We'll start with employment recommendations. Certified substitutes recommended the Board of Education approve the one certified sub listed below. Being support staff substitutes recommended the Board of Education approve the support staff substitute appointment that is listed below for the 17th week this full year. Unpaid volunteers recommended that the Board of Education recognize the unpaid volunteer listed below. Jeff Grigsby, sponsor for our volunteer track coach, so we certainly appreciate this support of our track. Adjustments, special projects stipends recommend that the Board of Education adjust the building leadership team, special projects stipend for the high school, as listed below. And you'll see those listed there, adjusted from eight hours to 14 hours, and they've been doing a little extra work this full year. Moves us to leads. Certified staff is recommended that the Board of Education approve the certified staff Certified staff is recommended that the Board of Education approve the certified staff leaves of absence as listed below. There are eight of those. Takes us over to six. Support staff is recommended that the Board of Education approve the support staff leave of absence as listed below, and then three of those. Resignations is recommended that the Board of Education accept the certified staff resignation listed below. Support staff resignation is recommended that the Board of Education accept the support staff resignation listed below. Support staff substitute is recommended that the Board of Education accept the support staff substitute resignation listed below. And that takes us over to page five, reassignment of equipment, and we have a very large list this time. And I have that in the office. I also sent that to the board with variety notes. We have a list here if you'd like to look at that as well. So it's recommended that the Board of Education reassign the following possibly unusable equipment to an higher capacity. The equipment will be used either for spare parts, maybe resold, or even for disposal. A lot of the equipment on that is equipment that was in our old buildings that is unusable at this point in time, so you can see that list if anybody desires to see that.
Second. Moved by Mr. Vaca, second by Mrs. Tamira. Is there any discussion? For the building leadership team, is that just the high school? And then, Mr. Yunker, on the reassignment of equipment, there are a lot of projectors and smart boards and things like that. Are those unusable because we don't need them anymore in our district, or are they unusable because they don't work anymore?
More so because they're obsolete and no one can use them anymore. And it could be repurposed and taken out of buildings and the use of them is going to have to be here, CLC, or whatever it is. So one of them are no longer comfortable.
Okay.
A lot of those smart boards, smart boards that were purchased when I was a principal. So, yeah, thanks.
Oh, I meant... I just meant a long time ago.
They were, they were, yeah. They were repaired. So they're not usable, and actually the software is not available.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Anybody else? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Vaca, yes. Mr. Tamira?
Yes.
Ms. Yetzi?
Yes.
Ms. Saxon?
Yes.
Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. We'll move to employment. Support staff is recommended that the Board of Education approve the support staff appointment as listed below, and one is for a bus driver, yay, and then another one is for cashier and cashier personnel.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Tamira, second by Mr. Saxon. Is there any discussion?
These bus drivers keep showing up on agendas.
We've done really well with getting more, so we're happy about it.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Tamira?
Yes.
Ms. Saxon?
Yes.
Ms. Yetzi?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
That moves us over to agreements. It's recommended that the Board of Education enter into contract agreements with the following. First one, for Bailey Communications, this is really an agreement for service for many different things here. Bailey is the communication company that provided us with our telephone, telepony system. So they will be providing us an agreement for support with the wireless access points, the network system, switches, and all of those things. So as for that purpose, you probably remember, we used to go through NCC for that service, so, and we're switching over to Bailey. Lurian City Schools is a contract for services for one of our, four of our special needs students. Orient City Schools is a agreement between our district and Orient City Schools for students with disabilities, and then Akron Public, a agreement between us and Akron Public for students with disabilities as well.
Second. Moved by Mr. Vaca, second by Mrs. Saxon. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. Saxon?
Yes.
Ms. Yetzi?
Yes.
Mr. Yunker?
Yes.
Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Acceptance of gifts. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following gifts with much appreciation. First, a 14, 2017 harvest for 100 t-shirts valued at $84 donated by North Ridgeville Giant Eagle to the high school for participating in the food drive. A pro forma elliptical donated by the Holdman family to North Ridgeville High School to be used in the weight room estimated at $200. That brings total donations received for the 1617 school year to $47,000, $21.43. Total donations received for the 1718 school year, $24,657.41. I would like to say that we really appreciate the donations, gifts, and so forth that were received throughout the year. Our community is very giving to our school district.
Moved, second. Moved by Mrs. Saxon, second by Mrs. Tamira. Is there any discussion? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Saxon?
Yes.
Ms. Tamira?
Yes.
Ms. Yetzi?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. The treasurer's report, Mr. Brolin.
First item is the recommendation to approve the financial report and the report of interest and investments from February 2015.
Second. Moved by Mr. Vaca, second by Mrs. Tamira. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. Tamira?
Yes.
Ms. Yetzi?
Yes.
Ms. Saxon?
Yes.
Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Second item is a transfer from the general fund to the Ranger Strong Fund in the amount of $10,000 for the physical school year 2015.
Moved, second. Moved by Mrs. Tamira, second by Mrs. Yetzi. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Tamira?
Yes.
Ms. Yetzi?
Yes.
Ms. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Next is an advance of funds from the general fund to the permanent improvement fund in the amount of $1 million. This is something that we forecasted for the next several years to cover maintenance projects and other capital improvements in the district. Since we do not have enough permanent improvement money or funds coming in from levies that exist, specifically from PI, it's necessary to transfer to the advanced funds from the general fund.
Second. Moved by Mr. Vaca, second by Mrs. Yetzi. Is there any discussion? Thank you for the explanation, Mr. Brolin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. Yetzi?
Yes.
Ms. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Tamira?
Yes.
Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Next is a standing now certificate related to contract with Fleet Vision software with Tyra Technologies. This is something that had been contracted for several months ago, and a purchase order had not been created at the time that the contract was entered into, so we need the Board approval.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Tamira, second by Mr. Vaca. There's two of those on here. Can somebody explain the difference between the two of them? This Fleet Vision software and maintenance, and then the other one is Fleet Vision software online training?
The software component, the first one is an upgrade to Fleet Vision and Tyra Technologies. What we had, what we had was no longer serviceable in terms of they can provide support for it, so it's an upgrade. And like I said, there was some miscommunication on how the PO was going to be created. And then the second one is basically similar to daily communications in the sense that it's online support for that software. It's like Tyra Technologies provides to our transportation partners to provide that support and training and needed for tampering.
And Mr. Yunker, just to clarify, this is software for routing of the school buses?
Yeah.
This is not software for the app?
It's all, all of our routing is done through this.
Did each of them call first and trans, switch names, is that correct?
Switch names, you had to be, there's a lot more. The upgrades to this are more for modern candy or education. You jump on the laptop home and do it, or the old version, you had to be at the shop to do it, so if something wrong, you have to go on Instagram for it. Evening, they have to come back in, so it was just one example of the gadgets.
Thank you.
More than I was looking for.
This is independent of the GPS?
Correct. Yes. Yes.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Brolin, there are opportunities for professional development, uh, meeting on purchase orders and how they're written, because I've seen already some in the last three months, and I've seen this all major in the board number.
We have had several. In the financial statements in the board summary, you have to mention, we have had meetings with the departments that these have been generated from, so that everyone understands what the sequence of the events needs to be. So hopefully moving forward, we will have meetings.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Tamira?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. Yetzi?
Yes.
Ms. Saxon?
Yes.
Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
And the second one, it's the same situation for the online training services and maintenance. And now, right here, the Tyra Technologies, Fleet Vision software.
Second. Moved by Mr. Vaca, second by Mrs. Tamira. Is there any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. Tamira?
Yes.
Ms. Yetzi?
Yes.
Ms. Saxon?
Yes.
Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
We don't have any business items listed, additional business, no announcements. It's hearing on the public on new items. If someone would like to speak about an item that is not on the agenda, that was your opportunity to do so at the podium. Scene 1. It's recommended the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss, and there's a little change in here, it's not how it's listed. It should be listed, to discuss compensation and employment for district employees. Moved by Mrs. Tamira, second by Mrs. Yetzi. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Tamira?
Yes.
Ms. Yetzi?
Yes.
Ms. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. McCarty?
Yes.